Okay, thank you. Approval of the minutes from the previous meeting. Let's pass on that until, because I was the only one who was here.
Okay.
Public speak time, senior one from the public, we'll move on. So new business, we have three joint poll relocations from Eversource. We've reviewed all the information regarding Main Street near Campus Lane. We have had a letter from East Hampton Savings Bank. They have no issue whatsoever. Drove through everything, looked very straightforward, and we do have these scheduled for a hearing at our next city council meeting. So I would entertain those to accept.
Okay. Why do them individually or just as?
I think we can do them as a group because they're all Eversource.
Okay.
So it's Main Street near campus, Park Street near Breamwood, and Line Street near Vouse.
Okay, so that's an infomercial of a second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Okay, so continuing business. This is the draft street acceptance protocol. I'm putting this in Justice mailbox right now. And if you want to take a little look, that incorporates the information that we had from the planning department, and it just kind of brings that project back on track. So I'm just going to send it to Jessica so that she can take a look at it, maybe go over it with the planning department, and then we'll do the next step. But it should be, it's close, it's very close.
So what in a, well, what in a summary would you say were the biggest changes that have been made to the presence of the, or is it not at all similar?
It's massively different. One of the things that I think is really important to us is that we've made it so that we don't lose money doing this. You know, charging to do the, you know, snow and ice removal mitigations and cleaning out that, you know, if we have to do, like, really helps us out a lot.
Yeah.
Really helps us out a lot. And adding an application fee helps us out as well. That just takes care of the administrative costs because all of these street acceptances need to go to the city attorney, and he charges us by the hour. So it basically just makes this so that, it's not income generating, but it makes it so that it's no longer a losing proposition for us.
Right, that sounds great.
So that was the big goal. And then, you know, once we have this together, we can add in all the streets that currently aren't accepted, so we can increase the mileage as far as our chapter seven.
Right.
So, yeah, it's kind of a win-win. And I know Jim Gracia is pretty excited to get that done, so. Last but not least, so we have, and this is one where I'm kind of having a hard time, but I think I just kind of want to go forward with it at this point. So we did receive this letter. This is regarding the Paul Street extension. And just to give you the history of it, we've been looking at it since before winter, and then it snowed, and then it snowed, and it snowed, and we were never able to take a look at it. And there was something about, it's very short, and it's a little cul-de-sac, it's a very small cul-de-sac. There was just something about it that looked like it wasn't quite done. We all kind of had that feeling. And there's still construction that needs to be done, which increases the, you know, odds of it being damaged with construction, empty lots still happening. And there was this kind of quirky street lamp that was like, it looked like it's at the end of the driveway, but it's an empty lot. But we found out that the, you know, city had requested it be a street lamp, but they never gave them any specs. I mean, this kind of looks like your Home Depot street light, kind of thing. And there was some question as to like, well, it stuck out, which is why we brought it up. We were like, what's with the street light? Because it's not really like a city street light, it's just a lamp.
Yeah.
But apparently it was something the city wanted, that's what they put in. Jim Gracia says we don't have any specs for that, so. So the developer requested a series of waivers to the subdivision design standards, but in the waiver requested that they would place one street light at the cul-de-sac. Planning board accepted the waivers and restated the condition requirement. Street light subdivision regulations require stiff on the regulation state that spacing of the street lamps be determined by DPW. It is unclear whether the applicant discussed the location. But Jim said the developer came for approval. As I mentioned earlier, the mayor would have to approve that light as part of our street light program, agree to pay for it. We think the mayor is currently paying for it now. And what I did is I got a copy of the waivers. So there were a bunch of waivers for this, so this is kind of why it looks not ready.
Yeah.
Connection to the adjacent development shall not be required. I think I emailed you a picture. Somebody had come up to me at a meeting and said that there was a gate, there's that, is it an age-restricted development right next to it, kind of a butts? There was a gate in between those two for emergency vehicles, and that has now been closed, like, that doesn't need to be there anymore. The cul-de-sac radius is smaller, that's a waiver. So it makes sense, because we were like, this is kind of this tiny little thing. The right-of-way may be reduced to 40 feet. Sidewalks not required. Soil test done today, it should be sufficient. Granite curving, waived, caud berms are adequate, which it has. Granite curb at the catch basins not required. So it kind of looks like there were these cutouts, which looked unfinished, but they're not required. Side drains not required. Loop water system not required. Street light located at the end of the cul-de-sac. Street light should be owned by the city. Developer will either purchase and install the lights and turn them over to the city during acceptance, or determine the cost of the lights and forward a check to the city for the purchase of the lights. So there were no design specs on what the lamp should be.
Yeah, is it burning?
No, yes, yes it is.
I can't imagine if you just grabbed the cheapest light behind it, which is the one that fits what all the other street lamps in town.
I think so, I mean.
Who makes, who did all this calls and get all these waivers?
I don't know. So that's the full, this was sent to Garsta and Bombard, so this is from the builder. So the Julian State subdivision plan is approved, subject to the following conditions. And this was the email that I got from, that was the attachment to the email that I got from Jessica.
So it sounds like the planning board approved all these waivers.
Right, so.
But, and I don't know if it was supported by letters from the city engineer, public safety department, or what, but that's crazy.
It has seemed a little, it's been, it's been tricky trying to put this together, just because, you know, things kind of look.
Whenever I see something bizarre, it's not Ann Prazo's mail.
So Jessica sent me that on June 22nd. Waivers from the subdivision regulations were listed in the 2011 special permit.
Are there houses on this little extension?
Yeah, so there's like, there's like a ranch, and then another ranch, and there seems to be construction going on. There's a foundation that's not all the way done, there is one that I think it's complete. I can't remember if it's occupied or for sale. So this, I'm sorry I didn't print this one out, but, so this was the email from the city engineer on June 18th, that the developer did discuss the location of the street light with me, but we did not discuss the style or size of the fixture, as far as I do not, you know, I have a standard spec for streetlights. I'll have to look at this particular light to see if it has sufficient light coverage to be in the effective street light. We've had issues in the past where street lighting intrudes into house windows. In regards to electricity use, that he would be responsible until the city accepted the street. He doesn't think that the mayor's paying for it. As far as any remaining lots we built on in the past, full buildout of the lots has not been a requirement for street acceptance. Sidewalks are not required, he doesn't have an issue with accepting the street prior to a full buildout. Delaying acceptance of the street until a full buildout could potentially be a financial hardship for a small developer. Until the street is formally accepted, we cannot claim that, you know, so.
I could, I could understand how not accepting it, not feeling, you had to wait until all the lots were built on, because sometimes.
Right, exactly.
The term economics, it just doesn't make sense.
Yeah.
And they'll just sit there and then be deteriorating and blighting and all that stuff, so.
Well, and this whole little section is very diminutive.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, it's just like, it's like a tiny little street with a tiny little cul-de-sac and a tiny little street lamp. It's just, I.
Like Lulupusian lamp.
I have no idea.
But that's just so bizarre. I don't know, I don't understand how people can't, I don't know, maybe I'm being chuffed, but like, you know, if I didn't know, I'd say, okay, I should probably find, acquire a street lamp that is consistent with other similar neighborhoods. Or you could even drive probably a quarter mile away and see what's at the next neighborhood that we have.
Right.
Versus letting Bernie Gall put up something he got at Home Depot, which is really, you know, something disparagingly.
Well, I mean, that's what is kind of going on, is that until we have something in our ordinance that says this is our street lamp spec.
Right, right.
It's, we have to, you know, we can go to ordinance and change this spec, but then it holds up the conservation commission.
Right.
And they've done great work. Like, I don't want to hold up what they've done.
You're talking about conservation commission?
Yeah, yeah, with their letter, because they, you know, it's very important to the.
That's, that's kind of trust.
The Squamic Trust, sorry. Yeah, I mean, it's kind of the last piece in this amazing project that they've done.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I guess the good, this is like a perfect example to find out where the mistakes have been made. It sounds like definitely there needs to be specs. Or even if it just said, even if the sentence said, "Street lamps must be in accordance with other street lamps of similar," I mean, at least there's just some guidance. If you just lay that up to the developers, they'll do what Bernie's all, it's, I'd set at Home Depot for $100, and stick it up. And if the curious, I bet you were paying money for, I bet you were paying electricity for it, we're very curious to, if Karen can find out if there's any individual, or we have that street, but I don't know how far it goes down, you know.
Well, and I'm glad you're here, because I would really like your advice on this, because I'm not sure, like, do we hold it up until the next meeting again, to try and put this together with what we have, or?
The only thing to me, oh, I don't know, I mean, the thing that, I haven't been there, I should clarify, is the same as most creatures, is that a street lamp? That's not acceptable. But is it something that we have an legal, probably not at this point, to make it, but do we want to put in?
We don't have an enforceable spec.
I mean, do we want to put in one that looks appropriate for a neighborhood there?
Well, and on the cul-de-sac, there aren't houses that count.
So where, is that, that's where that lamp is, at the cul-de-sac?
Yeah, it's on the far end of the cul-de-sac.
And is there just for safety?
It looks like Narnia, the one that's like stuck into the middle of nowhere?
Yeah.
Yes. It's just a lamppost.
Right.
It's not a street light. And I never heard back from Jim, because he said he was going to go out and take a look at it and say whether or not he felt it was, you know, too much, or not enough, or whoever.
Right, right.
And I mean, I guess I dropped the box, I didn't fall off.
Yeah, just how we fall off together. Some people get busy locations and stuff, I would.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah.
So the Squamic request.
I mean, I guess to me, all these things, I guess.
I don't understand what this has to do with the Paul Street extension.
Is there, there's an access to one of the courts, or to each of the meetings?
Installation of the Squamic Conservation Trust previously permitted entrance side off the new cul-de-sac has been waiting on that to accord. The sign company recently installed a similar sign for each use that they're primed to bring and move, and I've been hoping Paul Street might now be ready for it. So apparently we need to accept it before the Squamic Confirmed Trust put the sign out.
I mean, it sounds like a lot of the things, rightfully or wrongfully, and I kind of feel wrongfully, that have, have been legally waived, and so we have no grounds to say they need to be done if they didn't waive.
Right, I mean, I didn't receive this, like, gigantic list of, you know, special permit waivers until way late in the game.
I mean, I was just curious, you know, just like, of course, you know, that was, you know, that's what happens with problems, towns and things like this, is that board is not, I don't think there's anyone, so, probably a few people on that board who live there, live in this chair, I mean, they have big turnover, so you don't know if they will fall, they're not, they're not still there. Jess wasn't the planner, you know, so it's like, what can they say? But why, why was so much?
Yeah, let me see it again.
Why was so much given away to Bernie? So much like, that you don't have to do this, you don't have to do that, you don't have to do this, you don't have to do that. So I think that some of the.
This is Garstka Builders, is that, it's the same attorney, it's still a man to count, so I assume that that is still.
Yeah, I think it's Bernie Gall still.
The plan shows nine building mods and open space on a cul-de-sac. I mean, you know me at this point, I like to get things right.
Right. But the problem is that they've been waived. Legally, they have been waived, they don't have to do it, there's nothing we can do about it. The only thing, and I, we don't, I don't think we can even do anything about that lamp, unless there's some, unless.
So the street light shall be owned by the city. That's what's supposed to happen. So maybe we do have something to stand on, as far as it has to be a street light. This looks like a lamppost.
Yeah, yeah.
Like, I believe those are two different things.
Yes, I know.
I would, I would have that argument.
But is that one of those waves, or where was it mentioned?
No, no, it's, it's item number one is the nine waivers, and then item two is a street light shall be located at the end of the cul-de-sac.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I think that should be, and then, you know, me, I would talk to Karen and say, Karen, you know, where do we get our street lights? This, I don't know if you've been there, but this doesn't.
The applicant shall initiate the process with city council for replacement of a stop sign at the corner of Paul and Beechwood. I don't know if that happened. They did receive approval from, yeah. City of East Hampton is not responsible for the long-term maintenance of the island in the center of the cul-de-sac.
And I, I mean, to me, I guess I would, it sounds to me like most of the, I mean, I don't know, because you know what the question was, you and Dan had about should be, something like a lot of them have probably been waived.
That's exactly, like, so like I said, I didn't get this until.
Right, so if those have all been waived, the only thing, if you think you have a leg to stand on, because that, I mean, that's going to be, I haven't seen it, it sounds embarrassing, if someone was looking to buy a lot, like, what's that, big little thing sitting there? It's going to be a street light, put in a street lamp, you know, and, but again, if, do we have anything with, you know, he could argue, this is a street light, no, what are you talking about? And if we don't have any definition of what a street light is.
I could have the lamppost street light argument. I'm not saying it would be my strongest argument, but I could, I could.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, yeah, and I would, you know, I would talk to Karen and say, you know, because she may say we have access to street lights, it looks stupid, you know, we'll put one up or something, but I don't know where they get their lampposts, I don't know if there's, if she, you know, they want to go to town, have, you know, get a lawyer involved, if, hey Bernie, this isn't a, this is a lamppost, not a street light. But I think, it sounds like maybe the most, who is the most, the planning board had that discussion. Does Jess know what that light, light looks like?
I, I don't know if she's actually seen the lamp, but she knows that that's what we've been hung up on.
Yeah.
Because we were first, like, we had to figure it out, we were like, is that a city lamp or not? Like, are we paying for that? That looks like it's part of this property, like, we didn't know. So that's where we started the questioning.
Right.
Trying to figure out who owned it.
Right.
I know at Eastworks, I believe the property owner purchased the streetlights that are in front of the parking lot, and we paid for the maintenance and electricity. But, I don't know, I mean, agreements are structured a myriad of different ways, so I mean, I don't know, like.
She said, I mean, to me, most of the, I mean, I don't know what your list of things that needed to happen before it was approved, but it sounds like a lot of them have probably been waived.
Typically, we don't have a list. We kind of go out and take a look, and we get a letter from the engineer and the planning, and this is what they want. And then when we go out and take a look, such as with Bayberry, we're like, this road drops off into a pit.
Right.
And then we fix it, you know, but I mean, none of us are struct, you know, engineers, so it's just kind of eyeballing it.
Yeah, but you had that list, you know, road drops off into a pit, it's down, you know, and so then you could address it.
I mean, a lot of it is just common sense, so like, that's a tiny lamppost.
Okay.
That's where we are.
But is everything else short of like?
It didn't look finished, and that was what we were concerned about, and then it just snowed and snowed and snowed, and then when it did, it's like, this still doesn't really look finished.
Right.
And, you know, of course, with the construction still going on, there's, you know, is that a concern?
Right, but you think.
But all the waivers cover all those things.
All the things.
So the lamppost is the only thing that's kind of.
Yeah, you can take a picture of it, where is the street?
I do have pictures of it. Where the, how long would I have put that up? It's, you know, where college community is, that intersection, so if you go, if you go through that very dangerous intersection and take your first left.
Is that, am I thinking about, is that, I mean, like a show of building works?
Mm-hmm. So yeah, that's on one side, and then the community stores on the other. So if you were coming up between them and went straight across five, I mean, 10, and then there's kind of a small.
Was it the coal side or the other side?
The other side.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then, and then you take, and then you take, turn off of that road?
Yep. And it's like in the far back corner. So that age-restricted housing next door kind of like backs up into that, because that goes down into. I don't recognize these, it's just pictures of them.
I can go, this also might be.
Yeah.
Yeah, for me, that's the only thing that I would, because I, you know, I can't, I don't think any person who wants to buy a house should be, the city, they're going to think this is the city calls. Now, the question is, does the city want to legally go after Bernie and say, you need to put in a real street light? Or is the city going to say, well, no, we got a warehouse, or we have a few streetlights lying around, that's the question. Does it work? It sounds, it sounds like it looks stupid and not good for the city to have, and I think it was the fault of whoever signed off and saying that was okay, which is ridiculous.
Right.
Not even noise, but there were all those, there's actually, all those waivers given to all those people.
It's just been yet another thing where I'm like, okay, it just slowly unrambles this, you know, the soap.
I don't know, I don't know if I'm just making this more in my head, somebody may think that, the name's always upon everything, everything from the Stomp and Shock fiasco, name always pops up, and it's like, are you, you know, so you're Bernie Gall buddy, who just said, hey, I'm a, or what were those letters? Did those letters from Jim Gracia say, I don't think you should put in those curbing, or I think? I just wish you know, why did you, what is your rationale for giving all these waivers?
Right.
Maybe they're good, or maybe they're bad, you know? So, but the one thing, you know, everything else seems like it's been waived or.
It seems like it was a very different world in 2011.
Yeah, yeah.
So, I mean, one of the things that I've seen as we move forward, and we're looking at things, is to correct things as they go through, and maybe that is, you know, like, this is another piece of the ordinance.
Yeah.
Like, with the street protocol, that's why we did it right away, because we looked at the first one and we went, you know, this is, this does not give us any guidance whatsoever.
Yeah, but again, if you don't want to, I don't think you, if you need to go into specifics, you don't want to, but I think a simple sentence is, "Street lights must be, you know, in similar appearance construction to those in other parts of the neighborhood." Or just, I mean, you could just, instead of having like, oh my God, what are those street light specifications I need to put? I don't think you have to go, as long as you have them something to stand on, that it has to look like other street lights in developments, or of similar something, you know?
Right.
Just give them something versus like, you know, going to Home Depot and picking up some lamp that should be at the end of someone's driveway calling it a street light.
Yeah.
Is that basically what it is?
It, it is, I mean, I, like I said. Um, yeah, I mean, I think there's an argument to make between street light and lamppost.
Yeah, yeah.
You know?
Yeah, yeah.
So, um, let's get it right. I like to get it right, you know, so.
Yeah, I mean, but, you know, so I think, I think the question comes, are we, you know, unless, you know, are we going to?
I think we have to ask the planner to pull the 2011 plan, development, and, you know, read the minutes from those meetings and see, I mean, there could be a perfectly logical reason, but we just don't know.
For, for the waivers or for what?
How they came about with the agreement on the waivers. Like, what argument was presented to be like, that seems reasonable?
Yeah, yeah.
You know, like the new sidewalks, I mean, there's obviously kids in all of these houses, there's one of those little, you know, plastic signs, go slow, there's a lot of toys, there's a basketball net, there's, but it's tiny, like I said, the whole thing is so diminutive.
Why would you say, oh no, that's a building on that street? I know, it's small, but it doesn't, it doesn't have sidewalks anymore.
Yeah, asphalt berm is fine. I mean, the cul-de-sac radius is tiny, like, a bus isn't getting around that at all.
Oh, really?
Like, a school bus is not turning around on this cul-de-sac.
Huh. So I mean, I know, I mean, obviously, every, I'm trying to think, every development doesn't have sidewalks, so I guess the question is, when, what is the duty that makes you put in sidewalks on a little?
I don't know either.
But yeah, I mean, those are worthwhile finding out, I mean, when there may be, I don't know.
Well, these are some of the questions we pay, like, we've been asking, like, okay, so what about this part, what about that part, what about this part? So now, we see all these waivers, that seems to be the reason why. So now, the question would be to go back and be like, okay, why, why did we accept those waivers?
And it may be, I mean, I don't know, as I said, it may be that we won't know if, you know, maybe it was done improperly, whatever, it may be that they shouldn't have done that, but they did, and the only action we would have against that would be spending, you know, legal stuff, which I don't think the mayor would be spending legal money for that. Well, I think, I think that might be, again, I don't know why that grid was made, but the grid, for better or worse, was made, and I don't know what kind of strength we have to reverse it short of court, you know? And then, but the street light makes, even if it's a matter of like, you know.
The first, no, though, that it's, that's true then.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, I, maybe it's getting smaller in my head, but, you know, I don't know, it just, it didn't, I, the reason we brought it up is we all drove through, what's with that weird lamppost in the middle of nowhere? So, all right, let's drive through, take a look.
I know.
We'll move it, we're not, yeah, we'll go drive over. It's not going to get dark for another minute. All right, so the questions are why all the waivers, and then just see about that street lamp. And we should find out if we've been paying for the electricity.
Yeah, and again, I don't know if that can be, it may be that they've been paying for that street, you know, can they, can they tell you each address that they're paying, or each location?
I think so. Mayor Mike was always my go-to with street lamps. He was really into them.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah.
I think you could tell.
He's a total expert.
It says in there that.
You know what, he would probably know, actually.
Yeah, 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 it was during his term, yeah.
Yeah. Now, we have this kind of running joke where, there's one night, he was like, well, I got to go look at street lamps, and I'm like, yes? He's like, well, to see if they're out. I'm like, if they're out, you don't have to go see them. He's like, no. They blink, some don't blink, some go off, and then come back, and I'm like, okay. And he texted me just like, blink, night sky, dark night skies, like broken, like, really. Are you texting me pictures of broken street lamps? But yeah, so maybe that's come.
Yeah. It's annoying when you, all these waivers are given, which means how much.
And then the large scale things, you know, but I think so.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think.
We have to have a design spec for.
Right, to me, I think it's, you know, it's worth some investigation, but it's, Right, to me, I think it's, you know, it's worth some investigation, but it's, my feeling is a problem because the legal authority, the planning board, made that decision, there's not a lot we can do versus short of, you know, something legal, it's worthwhile. But the street, that's a little lamp, we can, the decision to be made is that, you know, is there enough in there to say that's not a street lamp, that's a lantern, or whatever you want to call, or even if not, if it's like, if the city has some that, this is ridiculous, it's so stupid, you know, this is going to be developed in the city, you know, we should take one that we have, but in the end, I mean, that's.
Maybe it's not, it was not the correct item in the spirit of the request, you know,